You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the April 12th, 2024 special meeting of the La Porte County Election Board. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
We call this meeting to order, La Porte County Election Board, April 12th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge. Roll call Heather Stevens.
Present.
Teresa Massa.
Present.
Brody Schaffner is present. Any corrections to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to add the approval of the agenda, the approval of the March 8th minutes. Um, right away and then I would like to add something from our, our travel board, our absentee board would like to speak briefly. They have a question for us.
Under new business?
Under new business. Actually, could we? Yeah, under new business.
Can you hear me now?
Okay. Is that better?
Under absentee. Wow, that is better.
Yeah. Absentee maybe slash travel board. Oh, something's not good.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Well, is there, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would like to make a, I would like to move Amy Jackson to just before or after Sherri Morris. Make that motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Any corrections to the meeting minutes of March 8th?
And again, I just wanted, I wanted to get them out. I know it, it, there's a lot going on right now. Welcome to, welcome to elections, guys. Um, so I just wanted to get them to you and if you'd like, we can table that and you can approve those at the next meeting.
I had a chance to review them Heather, thank you.
Nice.
I see no need to amend or correct. So I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, um, my proxy was sworn in. Just recognize her Regina Riddell. She's right there. Thank you for being here.
Welcome.
Time for public comment. Any public comment on Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. Public comment is closed. Moving on to new business absentee travel board.
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Chehoine, part of the La Porte County Absentee Board. And uh, the issue at hand is just what is the apps, La Porte County Absentee Voting Board allowed to do concerning the traveling board with um, nursing homes and assisted living and such. And the reason for this is back in July of 2023, the legislature and the um, governor made a new addition to the law that says that an application that is to be mailed to an individual has to be um, started by the individual themselves. That in other words, it says it does not apply to an application provided to an individual online and that agency of the state or a political subdivision of it may not provide an individual with an absentee ballot application unless requested by the individual or a member of their family. Or stated another way, we can't send out anything unsolicited. Okay? And when this law first came out in July, there's like newsletters and such to the clerks and to the election people. And it was in there saying that you just can't send out an application without it being requested. And so that had ramifications for the nursing homes. Just what are we allowed to do then with a nursing home? Can we have the nursing home give us the names and we'll, we'll send out ballots to them even though the, the, we never actually contacted any of the actual residents. So for that election that came in November, uh, very little was done for the nursing homes and assisted livings. But I'm reading this, it's clear to me that we're allowed to tell all the nursing homes and assisted living and such places that give us the names of everybody that wants to vote and we'll come with the traveling board and vote them. And um, so the section that I'm talking about is um, Title III, Article 11, Chapter 4, Section 2. Okay? And it's subsection G, the letter G. And it's interesting to note, oh, well, okay, another thing is four years ago, this county wanted to send applications to every registered voter in La Porte County. And because of the time constraint, it never happened, but they did end up sending postcards. Okay, but now this new part of the law prohibits that. There's gonna be no more sending out of blank applications. That's, that's exactly what this is saying. It doesn't, it's, but it, to me, it does not apply to us reaching out to nursing homes and assisted living for the traveling board. So um, that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, so traditionally, um, I know I did it when I was in voter registration before each election. I would send a packet to every nursing home, assisted living facility, any place where there was anybody and I would say, okay, this is, this is what's coming up. Let's make sure that number one, if your people want to vote, that they're registered. We, if they, if they wanted to change their res, their registration from their, where they used to live to the, the facility that they were now residing in, that was the time to do that. We would send an absentee by mail application, a travel board application. So travel board, we can't, we can't just go in as a travel board and say, okay, we're here, you can all vote now. They have to, they have to apply for this. Um, but I don't see, I don't, so I think, I think the question at hand has been, can you schedule to go to these places whether or not anyone has actually applied? Because we don't know if they're going to, but we have to have a schedule. Otherwise, we don't have people to work it. So is that kind of where we're?
I, alright, as, as a La Porte County Absentee Board, I am going to contact the assisted living places and tell them that we are available. We will come to your facility. And you can then tell us which residents want to vote and we'll have an application for them already made out. And all they need to do is sign it that day when we get there and they can vote on the machine. Uh, I'm not sure if that's what answers your question.
So they wouldn't.
We're just not gonna show up unannounced.
No, but they, are you saying that they would not have to request?
Well, they're requesting through their activity director.
But, but they're, they're going to request before we arrive.
Uh, yes.
They can't just decide on the spot once we're there.
They can, no, other people can come. From what I've read of the rules, yeah. I mean, the, what, what was going on with uh, prior to this rule is you, it says you cannot just send out an application, be it by mail or traveling board to somebody that never requested one. And it's, and it's only the county government or the state government. In other words, an individual could, would be allowed to send out as many blank applications to whoever they wanted. Provided they, there's, there's like a provision, gosh, it's, it's a different IC code part. You have to say where it's coming from, who's doing it. But that's all it's saying is that the county cannot send out an application without it being requested. So this, I don't, I don't see any, any change in what we've been doing all these years with nursing homes and assisted living and such.
I think that I agree. I think that what they were trying to do, they were trying to keep candidates from going through their soliciting. They were trying to keep parties from, from automatically sending um.
Heather, excuse me, no, I disagree. I.
You disagree.
Yeah, I, when they say that, that the government agencies cannot send out blank applications, that's like taxpayer money, right? That's, that's kind of the way I see it. They're just saying, and La Porte County did want to do that four years ago.
Yeah, they did.
So I think that's all they're, they're restricting is that because it, we could email. It, it actually says that we're allowed to email applications to every voter if we, if the county could. And it makes no restrictions at all on political parties or groups or any, they can, they can be sending out blank applications on their, on their money. You know, they, they pay for it.
Then I think that we're fine. I think that I, being, being around for a minute, I, I think if it were my loved one in a, in a facility, I would rather see a Democrat and a Republican come together and help my loved, and assist my loved one with voting rather than have somebody request an absentee by mail ballot for them. And then, you know, and it can be as simple as, oh, sweetie, sign here, we'll fill it out later. Yeah, I, I, I don't see, I don't see a threat there. I, I think the voters would be in very good hands. I, I, I've reached out twice and basically I'm getting the, the attorney issue of, the downstate answer is what I'm getting. You know, it's, it's up to your interpretation and that's why I asked Robert to come today so that we can get an interpretation from this board.
Is this the law in question?
Yes. Well.
Yep.
Can I?
This.
Can I throw guys have that?
Is this the email for printing?
Or is it?
Yeah, come on up, Robert. Come on up.
There it is right there.
Thank you.
That's, that's an, uh, an addition to absentee process.
Okay. Yes.
You know, I think it's, we also take, I know the mobile unit goes to a lot of these places. And that's great because a lot of these people can come outside and they can take advantage of the mobile unit, but some of them cannot. And that's where we need to go inside to them. So I, I would love to be available for them, but I want to follow the statutes, the statutes at the same time. So.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna repeat myself. The part about unsolicited, that's what caused all the, the hubbub prior to the November municipal election of 2023. And it's just saying that the government agency cannot send out applications.
By mail.
Without, without somebody requesting it. Well, also travel board.
So by, by.
Unsoli, and we're not, we're not solicit, you know, we're not sending out anything unsolicited. But when I call up and say, you know, we'll, uh, we'll come to your facility, just tell us who's, you know, who's gonna vote.
I would say though, that if we can't mail out a blank application, is that any different than taking blank applications with us? I think, I think that these would need to be requested ahead of time. I, and I know it's gonna, it's gonna cause, we're gonna have to go back because once somebody sees their, you know, their neighbor voting, they're gonna want to do it too.
But there's an alternative. According to this paperwork that you gave us, that an application um, can be requested online. So there are alternative methods.
Correct.
And I think the idea is if you've scheduled it ahead of time, it can be done without.
That's what I'm saying. They would need to be sked, pre-scheduled.
And I think that's what you're, you're suggesting as well, Robert, is that you're gonna work it out with a nursing home facility ahead of time.
Right, but people, but people can come. I mean, what, if they were not around or didn't know about that we're coming that day, they're allowed to come that day because that's when they're asking to vote.
Just like if the mobile truck is at a grocery store and people say, hey, I can vote.
Yeah.
They walk over that.
Same thing. Yeah, I agree. Very good.
I agree.
Good analogy. So.
Then I think we're good.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion? Do, do you need a motion?
Make a motion of that effect?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everything we just said.
Those are gonna be fun minutes to write, let me tell you.
You're good at it Heather, you can do it.
Alright, new business is closed. Moving on to old business, campaign finance hearings. First on the list is Sean Fitzpatrick. Sean Fitzpatrick. Okay. So the notice of hearing was sent out. Going to enter that into the record as Exhibit 1. And the committee name is Friends of Fitz. The notice is accurate as of today's date and time. I'll enter into the record the CFA 4 that was filed on February 2nd, 2024 as Exhibit 2. And it was due January 17th. Taylor, how many days late is that?
16.
Okay. Was a reminder sent?
A reminder was sent on December 14th.
I'll enter that into the record as Exhibit 3. You all have a copy of that. December 14th. They were notified. Was the late filing notice sent?
No, um, we didn't know what was going on with his council seat position and he actually was in our office doing his other job. Um, and we stopped him and then he filled it out at that time on February 2nd.
Okay, so before the deadline for us to send the remind.
Correct, yes.
For the late filing notice.
He filled out the filing notice? I'm sorry.
No, he filled out um, his CFA 4 at that time and turned it in.
Thank you.
And he dis, he did disband his committee at that time, correct?
Okay.
And did he file his CFA 1?
He filed his CFA 1 on February 1st, 2023.
Do you have that with you?
Maybe? Yep.
You don't happen to have a stapler, do you? Check. Gonna enter the CFA 1 into the record as Exhibit 4. Just look at it. Is that a part of the packet? Okay, Mr. Fitzpatrick, is there any representative here for Mr. Fitzpatrick or the committee? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I would move that we waive this. He, he has filed his CA 4 even though it was a little late and he's now disbanded his committee.
Is he too far away?
Okay, I'm not gonna be quite as nice. I, I'm, I would, I would.
Well, hang on, hang on. Is there a second?
No.
Motion dies for lack of second.
I would make a motion to reduce the, the fine, the fee. Um, I think that again, a lot of these have never been tracked. Um, they, none of this has ever been, at least not, not in years. None of this has been enforced. And I, I think to go from one extreme to, to the other is, I think it is a lot. Um, and I think that I would be comfortable to give Mr. Fitzpatrick a $200 fine.
The fine should be, according to the statute, 800. So you're asking that it be reduced by 600?
Yes. Only because I have in my head that how we can do this fairly across the board.
Okay. Hmm. Well. Have quite the conundrum here. If I don't second, there's no majority. You want to waive the fine? You want to reduce the fine? And we're setting the tempo for the rest of the hearing. Is that based on some kind of percentage? Or how did you come up with that number, I guess?
Well, I, I felt that if, if the thousand dollar fine, well, I, I don't want to see, again, I'm trying to be very fair about this because this has not been enforced in the past. So rather than a thousand dollars, I would like to see maybe, you know, a, a three to $500 fine. I just would like to come up with some numbers that I think are a little more doable for most people.
Any thoughts?
Making a motion?
Yes.
She made the motion. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Check. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do you have any paper clips or anything? It's alright. Next, Liz Bergeron. And specifically, Liz B for LPC. Hello, can you state your name for the record, please?
Elizabeth Liz Bergeron.
Okay. Do you have the hearing notice? Like to enter that into the record as Exhibit 1. That was dated March 11th, 2024. And we have a reminder notice dated December 14th, 2023. Like to enter that into the record as Exhibit 2. And we don't have a late filing notice because she filed on January 17th.
Correct.
And I'd like to enter the CFA 4 as Exhibit 3. Which was filed 1/17 at 1:38 PM. Technically one day late, according to the statute. What's um.
Actually one hour and 38 seconds, 38 minutes late.
Right.
Yes.
Yes. And Ms. Bergeron is here. Raise your hand for me. It's where I tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Do.
Alright. This is your opportunity to defend. Go ahead.
I could use the storm as an excuse. I could use wonky internet as an excuse. I was late. It's the fine. I was an hour and a half late. So it is what it is. I, you know, I'll strive next time to make sure my stuff's in early.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Bergeron?
No questions.
No.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move that the fine be waived for Ms. Bergeron.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Nay.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with the nay, that fine stays at $50?
Yes. Next up is David Whitfield.
Is Mr. Whitfield on Zoom?
Okay, this is in regard to Team Awesome, David Whitfield. That's the committee. There was a notice appearing sent March 11th, 2024 for today's date. Like to enter that in the record as Exhibit 1. Was there a reminder notice?
Reminder notice was sent December 14th, 2023.
Like to enter that into the record as Exhibit 2. And was there a late filing notice?
Yes, I contacted him February 15th, March 20th and March 27th.
Like to enter that in the record as Exhibit 3. And he did end up filing the CFA 4?
Yes, on March 29th.
Like to enter that into the record as Exhibit 4. Last call for David Whitfield or a representative for his committee.
Does Mr. Whitfield have other fines?
He has fines from um, campaign violations on his signs that he still has not paid and when I mail anything to him, he doesn't claim it when I send it certified. So. I did speak with him yesterday via email. Um, he told me the meeting time was inconvenient and so I sent him the Zoom link and I did not receive a response.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
What would the fine be?
Yeah, how many days late?
Oh, 72.
The full thousand.
How many days?
72.
72 days late.
I cannot make a motion to reduce this fine. This guy is straight out ignoring us. I, I can't do that.
So we have to make a motion to assess a fine in general and then a follow-up motion to, or it can be done to reduce it in one shot. But there has to be a motion to assess a fine.
I would make a motion to, to keep his fine at $1,000.
Is there a second?
Are you asking for two separate motions? I'm not sure.
So there has to be a motion to assess a fine in general?
Okay, motion to assess the fine. I'll amend my first motion.
I will second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you send it via sheriff service, please?
Yes.
And then that means that the, any cost for sheriff service
Additional $28.
Will be attached to his fine.
Next is Joshleen Denham. Specifically, the Committee for the Election of Joshleen M. Denham.
Yes.
Give me one second, please. Hearing notice was sent March 11th, 2024. Entering that into the record as Exhibit 1. Was there a late filing? I'm sorry, a reminder notice? Yes. December 14th. It's attached. Entering that into the record as Exhibit 2. And a late filing notice dated February 15th, 2024. Entering that into the record as Exhibit 3. And was the CFA 4 filed? Yes, it was. February 21st, 2024. Entering that into the record as Exhibit 4. How many days late?
Thirty-five.
All right, can you raise your right hand for me, please? Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You state your name for the record, please?
Joshleen Denham.
And you are here for the Committee for the Election of Joshleen Denham?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this is your opportunity to defend.
Okay, um, okay, I'm nervous, so give me a second. I never received the reminder notice on December 14th that you guys speak of. I did, however, receive an email dated September 11th, 2023, going over the different dates that are important reminders. January 17th is not listed here at all. I did file my October, but it would be convenient if that one date was put in there. It would have been, made a lot easier. Furthermore, I've been in contact with the Clerk's Office several times to make sure that I'm following everything I'm supposed to. As I met with you guys last year regarding magnets on my car, I came the first time and y'all told me you couldn't find anything wrong with it. The second time I came, you said there was nothing wrong with it, but leave your signs off the car. Very confusing. From the very get-go, I was handed the wrong form by the Clerk's Office to file my election. By May, I was contacted via email by, by Ms. Van Sickle that the wrong form was handed in and that the right form needed to be turned in. So I turned that in. I feel like the processes are not consistent and not helpful for a candidate who's just trying to be a part of her community. I feel like this is a deterrent, this whole process of not being given due process before we're blasted in the paper. The whole process for me has been very confusing. If, if that one date would have been just put on that reminder email, I'd have had that in way before January 17th. But because it was only October, and now I, let me take this back a second. I understand at the end of the day, it's the candidate's responsibility. But it's the responsibility of the Clerk's Office to make sure they're handing in the right, handing out the right forms, not making us jump through hoops. And to, also, when I handed in my October financial, financials, I asked, is there anything else you need from me? Because everything balanced to zero. I was told, no, I'm all good. So not getting a reminder letter on December 14th, as you speak of, I would have handed that in right away. In fact, when I was contacted, I handed it in the same day. So I, I can respect the fact that the board wants to get everything correct. But this process has been very confusing and also inconsistent for I, for me at least. I can speak for only myself. I, I feel like the board should clear everybody's, or at least mine, and then move forward doing it correctly for 2024 and years after that.
I will say that the first couple of days of filing last year, they were handing out the wrong form. And I said, wait, wait, wait. We pulled it back. I said, please contact everybody. We got it fixed. We were good to go there. However, anytime you have an open committee and it's on your filing forms, you are, anytime you leave that committee open, you sign stating that you will file an annual report. And that part is on you guys.
Right. And I respect that. But again, the, the whole process of me asking, is there anything else that I, you need from me?
Well, not, not at that time, there wasn't. But that annual report is still your responsibility. And everybody in, everybody in here, it's your responsibility.
I can respect that. I just feel like the whole not giving me due process before putting my name in the paper.
And that's why we're here today. Because I, I completely agree with you. I, I think everybody up here does.
And I wouldn't want this meeting today for all of the candidates to be a deterrent for them to file an election or a candidacy for their community because they're afraid that if they don't do everything exactly right, that they're going to get fined $1,000. I've stood before you three times now, and I think I've made it very clear that I want to do everything correct. So if I'm asking the Clerk's Office for information on what needs to be filed, and I'm being told we need nothing else from you, then I'm going to walk away not giving you anything else. My October 1 bounced to the penny, so I just, in my naivety and my need to get the correct information from the Clerk's Office, now I'm, you know, being called before you again with a $1,000 fine. And it's, it's embarrassing on my part, but it's confusing also because things were so inconsistent. There's a lot, not only me was handed the wrong form, my entire board was handed the wrong.
Yeah, and that's why we worked to correct that. I, when you brought that, that report in, in October, that was when there, the election wasn't until November.
Right.
That was all we needed from you at that time.
Right.
You are still required to file an annual report.
I understand that. I just wish it would have been on that convenient email that gave us all election reminders. Because if that January 17th date was there, you know, it's got four other dates on here, including the October 20th. And I'm not trying to fight my case. I know at the end of the day, well, I am kind of, but I understand at the end of the day that it's the candidate's responsibility, but certainly when we go to the Clerk's Office and say, this is all you need from us, I'm kind of expecting to get, you know, like, yes, that's all we need from you now, but remember you have a January 17th report that's going to be due.
Taylor, I'd like you to start stating that that is up to the candidates to, to figure out.
Okay.
Okay.
Here's, here's what we want. And here's why the campaign finance reports are so important. Because somebody could be embezzling funds, and we have no idea why, or when, or how. So if you don't file these, we don't know what you're spending your money on.
I understand.
And we haven't assessed a fine yet.
Right. Correct. But my October 1 bounced to the penny. I didn't receive any more funds. So I just kind of thought just the first report is all you need.
But we wouldn't know that until you file your subsequent reports that you didn't get anymore.
Right. And also, I filed my election four times, ran 13 and a half years in Trail Creek as the Clerk Treasurer, and never had to fill out a finance report.
And that's why we're here.
Right. And I can respect that you want to move forward. But I wouldn't have thought that it affected me, again, with all the reminder notices not having it, going to the Clerk's Office, not being told I needed something. Again, want to do everything correctly, but, you know.
We, we appreciate that. We didn't put your name in the paper. The reporters did.
Okay.
I don't talk to the press, and they didn't call me. Now, just you being here today has helped your case. I'm sure we're going to vote to reduce the fine. At the end of the day, we just want compliance. And you complied. You filed. As you saw with the gentleman before you, he didn't comply. He completely disregarded our notice to be here today. And so he got slapped with the full penalty. So contrary to popular belief, I do have some form of a heart. And I'm sure that we're going to take care of this. So thank you for filing your report. Now you know. And now if we see you again, you know. And I think that's the goal here. Trying to fix predecessors' mistakes and lack of caring. So, thank you. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Is this going to be the last time I can speak?
Yes.
If, if I am assessed a fine, even if it's reduced, is there any county funds that I can use to help pay for that?
County funds?
No, nothing. Okay.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I agree that we should reduce the fine. Assess the fine, but reduce the fine.
I agree.
What would you like that fine to be?
Let's see. Well, I'd like to be fair across the board.
I think that if it was a full fine, I think I'd like, if we gave Mr. Fitzpatrick a $200 fine, his original was 800. I, I think, could we do a, you know, a 250 or 300, something to get away from that $1,000 mark? Again, I want to be fair all the way across.
I'm, I'm honestly just for the, I'm okay with 200 across the board because basically anything between 500 and 1,000 makes no difference to me. It's very high. And especially if they, if they filed. So I would make a motion that we assess a fine of $200.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Fath. And more specifically, the Committee to Elect Tom Fath. Notice of hearing was sent March 11th, 2024. Entering that into the record as Exhibit 1. The reminder notice was sent December 14th, 2023. Entering that into the record as Exhibit 2. And there was no reminder notice because he filed his CFA 4 on January 17th at 12:10.
Yes, correct.
Like to enter the CFA 4 as Exhibit 3. Let me just catch up here. Raise your hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do. You state your name, please?
Tom Fath.
And this is your opportunity to defend.
Just lost track of time. Honestly, I had it on my calendar, and I didn't put the time. Found out on the phone at like 11:40, it was due at noon, so.
Were you 10 minutes late?
10 minutes late, yes. So.
I would make a motion to, to waive the, the fine.
Any second? Motion dies for lack of second. I'm not going to split hairs between Liz Bergeron, Tom Fath, and anybody else who filed. I mean, that first day, I'm fine with a $50 fine. It's not egregious. Thank you. Well.
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet. We're just having discussion. So I would make a motion to assess the $50 fine. That's required.
I would second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I, I tried for one, I had to try for the other. I'm keeping it fair up here.
I get you. Ernest Summers.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. There's a lot of emails.
So what?
Uh, what is the commission name? The committee is Ernest Summers, Clerk Treasurer.
Correct.
And the hearing notice was sent March 11th, 2024. Entering that into the record as Exhibit 1. Was there a reminder notice?
No, and this is going to be a little bit confusing. You're probably looking at the packet like, what the heck? Okay. He came in on January 17th and opened his committee even though it was what happened pre-election in 2023. So he hadn't opened a committee till January 17th of 2024 and backdated the, what was spent because it was under a different campaign.
That makes sense. So he ran in 2023.
Right.
But didn't open his committee until 2024?
Correct. And filed his CFA 1 and a pre-election report. So I didn't even have him in my spreadsheet as having an open committee because there wasn't one open at that time. When he came and filed, once I received his paperwork and I looked at it, pre-election was checked, and all of the donations were under Better Government for Long Beach because they were running ads and I guess funding it through their committee. But it should have been an in-kind donation to his committee.
Okay.
It is confusing.
Yeah.
Okay. But you did give him a late filing notice on February 9th?
Yes.
Entering that into the record as Exhibit 2. And he did file the CFA 4 on February 27th, 2024.
Correct.
Entering that into the record as Exhibit 3. Raise your right hand for me. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name, please?
Ernest Summers.
This is your opportunity to defend.
Okay. I apologize for any misunderstanding of the forms and the filings. I did do, fill out the form to start the committee a long time ago, before, it was back in October of last year. If I filed it incorrectly, or if I failed to file it, I don't remember not filing it. I filled it out and I brought it down here, but I didn't have a file stamp copy. So I have five exhibits that I would like to tender if that's suitable to the board.
Yes.
And maybe that'll help go through it. It will at least focus the discussion. How many copies should I tender?
How many do you have?
I have three.
Okay, we'll each take a copy.
I got four, actually. I can give, if Ms. Van Sickle wants one, I have fourth.
That's, I'm keeping the record up here, it's fine. Just three. How many days late was it?
Forty-one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And these are being admitted into the record as respondents, Exhibit 1's, 1 through 5.
Correct.
Proceed.
Okay. Exhibit 1, just to quickly go through these. Exhibit 1 is the opening of the Candidates Committee. That was filed. I don't have a file stamp copy, and I don't know what happened to it. But this was filed. I refiled it January 17th because I was told I didn't file it. But it was, this is not backdated. This is, this is actually what I filed. Exhibit two, and this is kind of interesting. I didn't spend a nickel of my own money and I didn't get any cash contributions. As Ms. Van Sickle has mentioned, the PAC, the Better Government for Long Beach PAC, made all in-kind donations on my behalf. And that is, uh, the exhibit number two. No, excuse me. Exhibit number three is the CFA five filed by the PAC on October 24th, 2023. Exhibit three is the, uh, the same exhibit filed by the, the PAC. For, uh, oh, excuse me. Exhibit two is the one that I filed on, uh, January, uh, February, hold on. January 17th of 2024. And this identifies all of the in-kind contributions that I was told that were made on my behalf. And it reconciles with their numbers. If you look at the, uh, uh, specific exhibits that were filed by the PAC, not with this office, but with the state, I think. Um, it, the numbers all add up to the same number. It was $3,552.43 in total in-kind donations on my behalf. And although it was filed on, uh, January 17th, which is the first exhibit, it shows that it was filed on January 17th of 2024. I did amend it. And that's the last exhibit. And that's neither here nor there, except that I corrected the form. What, I, I used a, a wrong form. There was confusion when I stopped by. I, I, you may remember, Ms. Stevens, you, you admonished us as we were leaving the room in Janu- in, 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 I can't remember if it was December or January, but it was early in January, if it was in January, that we all had to close our, our, uh, candidacies. And, uh, I did that. I did.
I wouldn't tell you you had to close anything.
I know.
Yeah.
I did. I'm, I'm saying I did, but you reminded us. You said, be sure to get your candidacies closed, and I did. So, I mean, I thought I was complying. Now, the, here, here's part of the problem, uh, from my records. And I'd, I'd be happy to, to come down to the office and go through what you have. But when I file something and I ask to have it file stamped, and exhibit one is a classic example of that, they only stamp the front page. And there are things in the, these are group filings and they don't file them, they don't file them or stamp them separately. So I only have the front page stamped.
So are you, are you saying that you turned the first CFA four in on January 17th when you turned in the CFA one?
Correct.
Okay.
And then you amended it February 27th?
Yes.
Well, that would make sense because this CFA four that's attached to this January 17th filing indicates that it's not an amendment.
Right. You know, you, all of this should have been filed the, last year.
I didn't know that, but okay, I'll accept that.
Because if you're going to have contributions to your campaign, you have, I mean, you would need this already. You would need a, a committee name. How would they know who to make those in-kind contributions for if you hadn't set up your committee?
I had set up the committee. I, I set up the committee, that.
Cause from what I'm seeing, it was set up January 17th of 2024.
It was filed again on January 17th, 2024. It was set up on November 1, 2023. That's where, when I signed it and, and I filed it.
But you don't have a file stamped copy?
I don't have a file stamped copy.
Okay. And you have no record of this, Taylor?
I have absolutely no record of this.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Any other questions?
No.
No.
You have anything else, sir?
No, just sorry for the confusion. I was trying to do it right.
What's the pleasure of the board? Statute calls for a $1,000 fine.
I would make the motion to assess and reduce the penalty to the same 200 that we've done with the others so far.
I'll second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Rosenbaum? Specifically, the committee to elect Mike Rosenbaum? The hearing notice was sent out March 11th, 2024. Entering that into the record as exhibit one. The reminder notice was sent and dated December 14th, 2023. Entering that to the record as exhibit two. Was there a reminder notice? No, because he filed January 23rd, 2024 on the CFA four. Entering that to the record as exhibit three. Raise your hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
State your name, please.
Michael Rosenbaum, also known as Mike Rosenbaum.
Taylor, how many days late is this?
Six.
This is your opportunity to defend, Mr. Rosenbaum.
Yes, sir, thank you. There's no question that I was late. I actually misread the date from the, this is very loud, sorry. Step back a little. I misread the date from the 17th to the 19th. And so, cause I kept thinking, it's due Friday, it's due Friday. And then what happened Friday, we had a snowstorm. And I have a copy that the, of an email that went out that the building is closed and I can give you that as a, that there was a travel warning. And, um, I actually was in a panic and called the clerk. And I said to her, what, still thinking the 19th was the due date. And she politely told me, well, it's up to the election board on what they care to do. So, but my point is, is that, um, this was a snow date. The building, I could not enter, I could not deliver it. On Monday, the building was open for part of the day, but it was also closed and we also had a travel alert in our community. I also like to bring to the point that if it happened on the 17th, the statute 354 dash 1.5, the deadline, if the office happened to be closed on the deadline day, you would have to the next business day. So all the reason why I'm pointing that out is, and it doesn't extend further than that. So it just says it on the deadline date, doesn't say what happens if it happened a couple of days later or anything. And you're under no obligation to take that into consideration, but I'm asking you to take that into consideration. That there was definite intent to be timely. I misread a date. I know I was wrong and I know I was late.
So the snow day was the 19th?
If you like, I'll approach and give you this.
No, no, I'm just trying to. So it was the 19th, because the 17th was a Wednesday?
17th was a, we had a snow date on Friday, then Saturday, Sunday, still a snow date on Monday. And so I just couldn't even get it here.
And you brought it in?
Immediately the next day.
On Tuesday?
On Tuesday morning.
You wanna submit that?
Sure.
Is it just one sheet of paper?
There's four sheets.
Okay. All is exhibit one? All is exhibit?
That's fine.
Okay. Respondents, one?
In the future, you guys, you can email these and that is perfectly acceptable. Take a picture of it with your phone, send it in. That's acceptable.
There's, there's no place where there's notification for us to do that. So I would ask that from now on, on all notifications, that you do that with an email address.
You can do that.
So that would be very helpful because trust me, if I could have emailed it in, even though it would have been on the 19th.
Yeah, that's statewide. Statewide, it can be emailed. So, yep, we can do that.
Yeah, that'd be easy to add to the reminder letter. Good idea.
Sure.
And may I add one more thing?
Yes.
It would be very nice if we could create a link on the website to allow possibly to let people know that, um, that that could happen. So somebody could possibly look it up that way of at least the, the email address.
Don't worry, I'll be heading to the council. I have a game, I, I got, I got a plan in, in my head.
So do I.
I'm coming.
Sorry, there's a lot to write down.
No, I'm very happy to wait.
Okay. Any questions? Any other questions?
No.
I'll start discussion now.
Okay.
I think it's entirely reasonable that because of the weather, he really only missed the 17th and the 18th. Those are my thoughts.
So you would reduce the fine to 100 dollars? Is that what you're?
In my, in my opinion.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I would second that.
And I would agree.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 May I have one last question?
Yes.
Uh, how can we take, I, I don't think anybody knows how we can now pay the fines that we.
It'll, it'll be in the order. We have to send you all in order, you have 30.
Okay, so, thank you. I think that'll be very helpful for the remainder of the people because I know I have my checkbook with me and I'm ready to just cut a check. But if it needs to be by notice, thank you very much.
We have to send you a written order. You have 30 days to appeal it if you choose to.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Excellent, thank you.
Joey Winski. More specifically, the committee to elect Joey Winski treasurer. Notice of hearing was sent out March 11th, 2024. Entering that into the record as exhibit one. Was there a reminder notice?
There was not, only because the last filing I could find was January of 2021. So they weren't in my, I started after that point. So I didn't have any notification that they were even an open committee.
Was there, there was no late filing notice because January 2026?
Correct, we did speak on the phone. She had called to check and see the status of her campaign finance report and we had a discussion and she came in and filed.
Okay. Entering that into the record as exhibit two. How many days is that?
Nine.
Raise your right hand for me. You state your name for the record.
Uh, Joey Winski.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. This is your opportunity to defend.
Uh, this is a little bit hard for me to talk about. But, excuse me, for one year, my husband was going through cancer treatments. Uh, so, and he passed away on December 7th. So I was not concerned with too much else except for him. And so that's, that's what happened. I did not receive a notice. So I, you know, I, my focus was on my husband.
We are sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Yes. Do you have any exhibits?
No.
Any questions for Ms. Winski?
No, not for, oh, I thought you were talking to me.
So you're saying for 2022, 2023, you didn't file the annual reports?
Um, you know, I, I tried to find my reports. And, um, I have so much paperwork that is at my house. I did not locate that yet.
They're on the county website.
The, mine? No, I, well, I wanted my copy though, so that I could bring it here, so, um, yeah.
Okay, so you're saying for those two years, you didn't, you just didn't file them?
No, I didn't say that I didn't file. I said I can't find my, I have, I have a file at home with all. I've been around a long time, you know? So I keep everything in one file and I cannot find that file yet. I will, I'll find it one of these days, but.
Taylor, you don't show anything else for Ms. Winski?
I have a spreadsheet and I keep the physical book and it's online and there is not one for 2022.
And nothing?
Or 2023. Well, I mean, the one she filed in January was from 2023 and she did file a new one covering 2022 as well. It should be in the packet for both years.
Oh, I, I, she, you're, okay, I see what you're saying. She filed for 2022 and for 2023 on January of, in January of 2024.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, consistent with other reductions, uh, I would move that we reduce this to $200.
And again, while we're, I'm very, very sorry for your loss to not file. And again, you've been around a long time. I mean, right, this just, this was not on my mind. I mean, I, you know, that was the last thing I thought about. And normally I would file every year. That's why I, I'm sure I have a 2022 that I filed. I mean, you know, I, I've been an office holder since 1996, so I know you have to file those.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. You're done with me, right?
Yes, thank you. Next is Brian Gray.
He is having surgery right now.
I would move to continue the hearing for Brian Gray. Do that.
Did he request to continue it?
He didn't, he just sent an email saying.
I think he was standing in front of us.
He was, and then he sent me an email with his actual doctor appointment confirmation just to prove that he was in surgery.
Um, he didn't file his until March 28th, 2024. I would be comfortable to assess the same reduced fee that we have assessed the others.
Well, let me make a record.
Okay.
Notice of hearing was sent March 11th, 2024 to the Brian Gray Committee. Entering that into the record as exhibit one. The reminder notice was sent December 14th, 2023. Entering that into the record as exhibit two. The reminder notice was set December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, entering that into the record as exhibit two. And the late filing notice was sent February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I also sent one March twentieth and March twenty-seventh.
Okay, entering that into the record is exhibit three. How many days late?
Seventy-one.
And he did file it March twenty-eighth, CFA four, entering that into the record as exhibit four. What's the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion to assess the reduced penalty, the reduced fee of two hundred dollars.
I'll second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving right along, Scott Bell. Citizens for Scott Bell, last call. The hearing notice was sent March eleventh. Entering that into the record as exhibit one. The reminder notice was set December fourteenth, entering that into the record as exhibit two. And a late filing notice was sent February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, entering that into the record as exhibit three.
I also sent one on March twentieth.
And he has still not filed, right?
He has not, and I checked his address in the voter registration system, so he is still voting, he is still at the address I am sending mail to, I have not received any mail back, and so I called him on April fourth, left a voicemail for him, and he is just ignoring me.
And he filed one last year?
He has filed one every year, um, even prior to twenty fifteen, so.
And no response?
No.
And he still has not filed us of today's date?
Correct.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I think that I would make an, a motion to assess the full penalty.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Just to clarify, that's the one thousand dollars.
One thousand.
Am I sending the sheriff service to?
Yes, please. James Arnold. More specifically, the committee to elect James D. Arnold Sheriff. Hearing notice was set March eleventh. Entered into the record as exhibit one. The reminder notice was set December fourteenth, entered into the record as exhibit two. And the late filing notice was set February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, entered into the record as exhibit three. And was there a CFA four, yes, that was filed February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as exhibit four. How many days late?
Thirty-four.
Raise your right hand for me, please. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
Yes.
You state your name for the record, please.
James Arnold.
And this is your opportunity to defend.
Okay, um, I ran for office in May of twenty-two for sheriff, and I lost the primary, and I thought that was it, and I did not know I had to disband my committee. So for a year and a half, it was just laid open, I, I didn't know. And that, that's as simple as it gets, I mean, I didn't have any communication with the party, nobody, no guidance, I didn't have, I didn't, this is the first time I ran, and it's gonna be the last one, because this is not worth it. And, and that's, soon as I found out I had a fine, I came down and closed out the, the committee, and I paid a hundred dollars on it already, and that's where I stand.
Sure. Anything else?
Nope.
Any questions?
Nope.
For Mr. Arnold?
Yeah, did you receive this notice on December fourteenth?
I don't remember, I, I received a notice, it was a one-line for all twenty twenty-three candidates, and since I didn't run all that year, I only ran in twenty-two, I thought maybe it was a mistake or something, I just, I disregarded it. Didn't thought, I didn't think it applied to me.
You didn't call in?
Nope, I, I just thought, maybe it was like a mass mailer for anyone that had run prior, I don't know. I've never done this before, it was all new to me.
I get it.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I would move that we assess a two hundred dollar fine to Mr. Arnold.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So it would just be the one hundred dollars more, or do I have to pay two hundred on top of the one?
No, just two hundred.
Two hundred total.
All right, then, good, thank you.
Yes. Next is Paul Vincent. Specifically, the committee to elect Paul Vincent.
Um, so I've tried calling him, mailing him letters at two different addresses, because it looks like he changed his voter registration at some point to another address. For the first address that I tried mailing everything to, that his committee originally is opening, I've received the return mail from it, but the second address, I haven't received anything back, but I've also received no communication back either.
Okay, notice of hearing was set March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, entering that into the record as exhibit one. The reminder notice was set December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, entering that into the record as exhibit two. And the late filing notice was set February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, entering that into the record as exhibit three. Did he file a CFA four?
Correct.
He did file?
He did not file.
He did not file, so he still has not filed?
Correct.
We've received nothing from him since January of twenty twenty-two?
Correct.
So days, days late?
Um, well, I didn't add up till today's date, so.
Hundred and?
What's the pleasure of the board?
Um, I would make a motion to assess a one thousand dollar max penalty.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sheriff Service, please. Nathan Patrick. Nathan Patrick. Specifically, the committee to elect Nathan Patrick, I believe he was asking to appear via Zoom today.
Believe he's the reason that I requested a Zoom link.
Last call for Nathan Patrick. Very well. Notice of hearing set March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, entering that into the record as exhibit one. Reminder notice sent December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, entering that into the record as exhibit two. And the late filing notice sent February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, entering that into the record as exhibit three. And did he file his CFA?
He did on March twenty-eighth.
Entering the CFA four as exhibit four, filed March twenty-eighth.
I will also add that I reached out, um, for late filing on March twentieth and March twenty-seventh.
Okay. How many days late?
Seventy-one.
At least he filed.
And I did communicate with him two days ago, and he asked for a Zoom link, or said he would be able to appear via Zoom, I did send it, so I, I don't know what happened.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I would make a motion to assess the reduced penalty of two hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Hello, is this for me? Sorry.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Patrick, hang on, we're gonna put you in the? Any way to make him bigger? Yeah, the Zoom user?
Yeah.
Mr. Patrick, do you have live camera feed?
I do not.
Okay. Can you raise your right hand for me?
I can.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
So help me God.
And state your full name for me?
Nathan C. Patrick.
This is your opportunity to defend.
Greetings, all, so I, on the twenty-sixth, received a text from someone back in Indiana of the paperwork that was sent out, it wasn't sent to me, it was sent to a eight oh one Hobart, I guess that was something that was last on file, that is not my address, but as soon as I got that information, nor was anything sent to my treasurer, um, Christine Kaiser, but as soon as I got that text, uh, from that person in Indiana, they were just shuffling through their mail, like, hey, this came, I'm like, okay, great, I, uh, um, I sent a text to, uh, County Clerk Stevens, and she directed me to get in contact with Taylor, and she helped me get the information that I needed, I got an email from Taylor on the twenty-sixth, got it over to my old treasurer, Christine Kaiser, and she, the next day, went in person and filed the, um, this, this dissolution, as well as the last amount of numbers that need to be, um, inputted, and so here we are.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
All right, any questions for Mr. Patrick?
No.
I don't have any, Ms. Stevens?
No.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Your turn.
My turn, I'll make a motion to assess a two hundred dollar fine.
Reduced from?
Reduced from a thousand. Is there a second?
I will second that.
All in favor say aye.
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 Can we get a address?
Mr. Patrick, can we get a good address for you?
Yes, I have a P.O. box. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
P.O. box, three, three, five, four, two. Tulsa, Oklahoma, seven, four, one, five, three.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Sellers. Specifically, the committee to elect Jeffrey Sellers to Noble Township Board. Hearing notice was sent out March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, I think I can read that from memory at this point. Entering that into the record as exhibit one. Reminder notice, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, entering that into the record as exhibit two. And the late filing notice was set February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, entering that into the record as exhibit three. Was the CFA four filed, yes, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, entering that into the record as exhibit four. How many days late?
Sixty-two.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
Yes.
And state your name, please.
Jeffrey Sellers.
And this is your opportunity to defend, sir.
Originally, I thought I had already filed the, the disbanding, but apparently I didn't, and then I got extremely busy from after that on with, uh, with my regular job and my side hustle job, and then I got the notice, and then, uh, I had some health issues and, uh, still busy doing other things, and I completely forgot about it.
Well, thank you for filing it. Any questions for Mr. Sellers?
No.
No.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to assess the reduced penalty of two hundred dollars.
Reduced from a thousand?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Next up is Michael Ducey. Specifically, the CTE, Committee CTE Ducey. I take a wild guess, and guess that the hearing notice was set March eleventh, yep, March eleven, twenty twenty-four, entered into the record as exhibit one. The reminder notice was December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, entered into the record as exhibit two. And the late notice was set February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, entered into the record as exhibit three, and did he file?
Yes.
Yes, he did, entering the CFA four into the record as exhibit four, filed February twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. How many days late?
Thirty-seven.
Can you raise your right hand for me, sir? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
Yes.
State your name for the record.
Michael Ducey.
This is your opportunity to defend.
Nothing to say.
Anything to admit as far as exhibits?
Well, again, uh, very similar to Mr. Arnold, Officer Arnold, I mean, didn't get the notice, the, the other one was a year earlier. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Ducey?
No.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I would move that we, uh, reduce the penalty of a thousand to two hundred dollars.
Is there a second? There's a second, motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, thank you, sir. Rudolph Netzer. Specifically, the committee to elect Rudolph Netzer. Hearing notice was sent March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as exhibit one. There was a reminder notice sent December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, entered into the record as exhibit two. The late filing notice was sent February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as exhibit three, and was the CFA four filed? Yes, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, entered into the record as exhibit four. How many days late?
Forty.
Raise your right hand for me. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
Yes, sir.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Rudolph Paul Netzer.
This is your opportunity to defend.
Okay, I didn't realize I got that many reminder notices. I got one, I came in here this spring, young lady across the road, helped fill it out, and I went home. I have a committee of one.
Is that all, sir?
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Netzer?
No.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I would move to reduce his one thousand dollar proposed assessment to two, two hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Tony Wallace. Specifically, the committee, or Tony Wallace for Hannah Township Trustee. Hearing notice entered into the record as exhibit one, set March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. The reminder notice, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, entered into the record as exhibit two. The late filing notice sent February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, entered into the record as exhibit three, and was the CFA four filed? Yes, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, entered into the record as exhibit four. Raise your right hand for me, sir. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
I do.
And state your name for the record, please.
Uh, Tony Wallace.
And this is your opportunity to defend.
I don't know about the letter December fourteenth, I got a letter in the mail March sixth, opened it up, saw what they were asking, and hadn't heard anything, I forgot I even had a committee, because I didn't use it.
a committee because I didn't use it, didn't open up an account, didn't get any donation, didn't spend any money. I didn't even know I had it. I forgot I had it. So walked in the door, filled out the form, brought it in Friday the eighth. They couldn't accept it because members of the clerk's office didn't know how to accept it. So I had to come back on Monday and give it to the right personnel at the clerk's office to close everything out.
So you disbanded?
Huh?
You disbanded?
Yeah, I disbanded because I forgot even had, never used it.
True.
I have that I received it on the twenty-sixth of February.
Received.
Closing out.
It's Wednesday, though.
It's February? I thought it was March. I don't know. I'm better yet.
Better than you thought.
Yeah, better than I thought. I thought it was March. I know. I know I got it on a Wednesday. You got twenty-sixth?
Yes.
What day is, what day of the week? Because I know I got it on a Wednesday, and then, like I said, I walked in the door, filled out the form, brought it in Friday.
That was a Monday. So the twenty-third, maybe?
Yeah.
That was Friday?
So, no, that, the twenty-sixth was the day I had to come back because I came in that Friday, the twenty-third. Actually got it, so it'll be the twenty-first. That was the day I actually got it in the mail.
Okay.
The notice.
Any other questions for Mr. Wallace?
No.
What's the pleasure of the board? I think it's my turn. I'll make a motion that we assess a two hundred dollar fine, reduced from a thousand. Is there a second?
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett Parks.
Good afternoon.
Hello. Specifically, the Parks for Pleasant Committee. Hearing notice was sent March eleven, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as Exhibit One. The reminder notice was sent December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Entered into the record as Exhibit Two. Late filing notice was submitted February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as Exhibit Three. And he did file a CFA Four, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as Exhibit Four. How many days late?
Thirty-seven.
Raise your right hand for me. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
I do.
State your name, please.
Brett James Parks.
This is your opportunity to defend.
Well, I had the opportunity for running for Pleasant Township Board in the winter of twenty twenty-two. It's the first time running for politics. And, yeah, I was still going under this entire time up until I never received the December fourteenth notice. The first notice I got went from a text message that I'd received a delinquency, and so I looked through my mail the week of February fifteenth and saw that I had a postmarked February seventeenth notice that I was delinquent. I then came to the February twenty-third meeting that you guys had to vacate and wanted to know what was going on because I thought this entire time that I was in compliance in front of you guys and in front of the public and my township. I honestly and wholeheartedly thought I was in compliance. And the reason for that, when I filed for candidacy under the local office exception, in Chapter Three of my twenty twenty-two Election Board Manual, I was going off that this entire time. That said a candidate for a local office for which the compensation for that office is less than five thousand dollars, which mine is a thousand per year, per calendar year, who receives more than five hundred in contributions or makes more than five hundred in expenditures as a candidate for the local office, must have a principal committee. Well, I filed, I had zero dollars at the time. I was very ambitious, and it said, like, a candidate who meets this exception must file the CFA One form not later than noon. And then it says if a candidate for a local elected office for which the compensation is less than five thousand per year does not receive more than five hundred in contributions or makes more than five hundred in expenditures as a candidate, then a campaign finance report need not be filed. And that was from the twenty twenty-two manual. I looked in the twenty twenty-four manual, and I did see a new bold statement between the two paragraphs that say, regardless if, like, you spent, received zero, you still file zero. So I looked at the twenty twenty-four. I hadn't looked at a campaign manual since twenty twenty-two, when I received the Chapter Three stuff from the clerk's office. And so then I was told, like, since my committee was still open, that you still had to put zero. And I said, I apologize. I'm sorry. That I did not know that because I was still just going off of the board exception for, like, the board positions, not city council or county council, but for the exception for board members.
Anything else?
No.
Any questions for Mr. Parks?
No.
No.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Like, to assess a reduced penalty from a thousand dollars to two hundred.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
Can I? Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye. Did you say aye? True.
Yes. Was I too late for question? I'm sorry before you guys. Go ahead.
We didn't have any questions for you.
Oh.
Do you have it for us?
Yeah, I was just still clarity, though, like, on the exception because I had received zero and spent zero. So with, just clarity with future, like, with the local exception?
Anytime you have an open campaign finance committee with our office, you're required to file an annual report.
Okay, and I know in the twenty twenty-four manual, it showed in bold print, and I have that, I received that, like, online, that it says even if zero. But in the twenty twenty-two, that was not in there. Was that still just supposed to be known by candidates then? Even in twenty twenty, even though it wasn't in bold print in the manual then?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could disband your account.
No, I did. Oh, right after the twenty-third meeting, I forgot to mention that, that I went with my wife, and we went straight. I picked her up after this meeting on the twenty-third of February, and we disbanded it immediately. So.
Good deal.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Aaron Kirk. Aaron Kirk.
He said he travels for work, and he can't attend. I did send the Zoom link, though, just in case.
Okay. Hearing notice sent to Committee, specifically Friends to Elect Aaron Kirk, and that was sent March eleven, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as Exhibit One. The reminder notice was sent December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Entered into the record as Exhibit Two. The late filing report was, or notice was sent February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as Exhibit Three. And did he file his CFA Four? Yes, he filed it April fourth, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as Exhibit Four. How many days late?
Seventy-eight. I will add that I did reach out to him on March twentieth and March twenty-seventh as well.
Okay, and he's not on Zoom? No. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I would move that we reduce the one thousand dollar fee to two hundred dollars.
And assess two hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sheri Morris. Committee to Elect Sheri Morris for trustee. Hearing notice was sent March eleven, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as Exhibit One. The reminder notice was sent December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Entered into the record as Exhibit Two. And the late filing notice, or late reminder notice was sent February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as Exhibit Three. Was the CFA Four filed? February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Entered into the record as Exhibit Four. How many days late?
Thirty-six.
Like, to make a motion to assess a fine of two hundred dollars, reduced from a thousand.
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Regina, I think you're up.
Rudy, you gonna keep us in order, or you want Regina to do it?
What do you mean?
You still want to read everything and just have her vote?
No.
Okay.
She can do it. She's good.
Just enter the, enter into the record each notice.
Help her out, will you?
Yeah, we can help her.
Help her. Poor Regina thought she was just gonna come vote for him.
I'll just do the voting. Would you like me to? I want you to do it. Very good. I'd be happy to. I appreciate that. The next item is Amy Jackson for LP School Board, Laporte School Board. Amy Jackson. Hi, how are you?
Good.
We have a hearing notice sent on March eleven, Exhibit One. Reminder notice on December fourteen, Exhibit Two. And a hearing, I'm sorry, late filing notice sent on February fifteen, Exhibit Three. And we have a CFA Four filed on March first, and that will be Exhibit Four. And Amy is present, is that right?
That's right.
Do you swear to tell the truth, raising your right hand? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. This is your opportunity to defend.
Thank you. I don't have a defense. I was late. I was a first time running for office. I got some bad information when I got my first file that said because we were not associated with a political party in this opportunity, that it didn't apply to us. My fault for not making the phone call and doing my due diligence. So I take responsibility and respect whatever decision you make.
Okay. How many days late, please?
Forty-four.
I would make a motion to reduce the assessed penalty from a thousand dollars to two hundred dollars.
I second that. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Denise for Clerk Treasurer. Denise, are you present? So we have a notice of hearing. I don't see a notice of hearing.
I may have forgotten to make a copy of that one, but everyone didn't get a notice of hearing. I was busy yesterday.
Did you receive that, Denise?
It is here. I apologize.
Teresa? I think he might need to.
Closer. Yes, indeed, Kevin. Thank you. Exhibit One is the notice of hearing dated March eleven. I have a notice on November twentieth of delinquent fines, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. I have another notice on December fourteen, twenty twenty-three of reminder. Those will both be group Exhibit Two. Late filing notice on February fifteen, twenty twenty-four, Exhibit Three.
And there is an email discussion in there as well about the filing from February twenty-first, I believe.
Okay. Denise, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the whole truth? The truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Did you want to explain and defend?
Yes. So in two thousand twenty-one, I was asked to fill the term of the previous clerk treasurer. So I never went through an election process, you know? So for three years, you know, I was just an appointed clerk treasurer. I'm not making any excuses as well, but I didn't have any mentorship or anybody to tell me what that process was. Once I did this election, I turned in my expenditure report after a delinquency notice, you know, which I will take full responsibility for. But I didn't have an election. I didn't have any opposition. I didn't have any expenditures. So when I turned that form in, I really thought that that was the end of my responsibilities as the clerk treasurer for the forms that I need to turn in. And I know it's not your responsibility to babysit us clerk treasurers, you know, because I know you have, and I can respect the work that you have as well. But it would be really nice for the future clerk treasurers, you know, to have something just like Tom had said earlier, something to offer us, whether it's a video, online, or something to offer us to say, hey, this is, this is your responsibilities, and this is the fines that you're going to endure if you do not, you know, meet these requirements, you know, from your standards. So that would be something that I would appreciate, you know, moving forward for future clerk treasurers. So we won't have to have, you know, public hearings like this. That's all I have to say. And I am sorry for my delinquencies.
Okay, so I don't think I mentioned the CFA Four was filed on February twenty-first, and that will be Exhibit Four. And how many days late do you count?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. What would the board like to do?
Well, I will say I completely, while I agree with you, we don't have just a video that we can put up that says, hey, this is what you guys need to do. But that's, that's not something that we have, and it's frankly, that's, it's my opinion that that responsibility would fall on the two-party chairs. Having said that, I do appreciate, I appreciate you, and I hope you know that. I would make, I would make a motion to assess a reduced penalty from one thousand dollars to two hundred dollars.
Second. Very good. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Just think at this time, next year, Taylor's gonna be a pro. She'll be able to answer all the questions.
She's kind to you.
Most of the time.
So the next issue is Committee to Elect Rodney for us.
He did send in an email asking for a continuance because he is out of town for training. And that, I believe, is in your packets.
Okay. Is there a motion?
How late, how late was his?
Nineteen days.
I think that he has an opportunity to be heard.
I would agree with that, and I, yeah, I would agree. I would make a motion to continue this.
Yeah, I would second that. Very good. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Will appear at our next hearing for our first opportunity to reschedule with sufficient notice?
Yes.
The next matter on the agenda is Committee to Elect Steve Holofield. Mr. Holofield? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ladies. Steve Holofield, six, seven, eight, two, east, one hundred south.
Before you speak, I'm sorry, let me go through my exit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I should have done that. Okay.
I'll say, you're speaking here in other meetings.
Hearing notice, which will be Exhibit One, is dated Jan, January seventh. I'm sorry. March eleventh, as all the other ones have been. That will be Exhibit One. Reminder notice. I do not have a copy.
I did not send a reminder notice. I didn't have a recent filing. I didn't have anything since twenty eighteen.
Okay. And do we have a late filing notice?
Oh.
I don't see a late filing notice. I don't see a late filing notice either.
Uh, everyone did get mailed one. I just may not have made a copy of it.
Okay.
Okay.
What do you?
Well, I'm a little confused. So is-
He had called in to you and asked you when the last time he had, or if he needed to close out, or trying to make sure everything was in order. He was trying to-
So that's my question. Is, is this one of those-
It is past the statute.
It was past the statute. We just wanted to get him closed.
No. This was, he came in and filed, he had called you to see if he saw an open committee or ever disbanded prior to the January 17th deadline. And you had told him, I don't see anything, because you had checked with me. I didn't see anything open for him, but I didn't go all the way back to 2018. He came in and disbanded. He did come in and close or filed something, but-
Did he come in and close?
He came in and disbanded his committee from 2018, but it was-
On January 17th of this year.
Of this year.
So that would have been one that is more than three years old that we could have disbanded ourselves.
Well, this was prior to us discussing disbanding, and he came in on his own and filed this document.
Okay.
I- This was just done under his own doing. We had not reached out to him regarding this.
Right, but at that-
We did not know that we could disband at that point. We didn't find that out till after the meeting when we discovered all these people were late. And it's because they hadn't been, no one had ever had him come in, file or disband or reminded him about anything because they weren't keeping track of it at that point to that extent.
So he's not touched this committee since 2000?
Correct.
I'm gonna have a hard time-
And he hasn't been in the system at all?
Correct. So this was just, he was just trying to do the right thing. And so, I mean-
I'm confused here.
Welcome.
I'm under the impression I'm here for filing my CFA 4, I believe, one hour and five minutes late for $50.
Correct.
And now you're talking about-
So committees that are-
I remember doing that paperwork.
Than three years old, correct? Older than three years, and they have not filed anything. The board is allowed to disband them on their own. So the board could have done that. We didn't know that at the time, and we didn't know what year that filing was from. You were just disbanding an old committee doing, trying to do the right thing. And it was like an hour and two minutes later, something like that, which was still technically late, but now the question is-
Each happened to do it on that day, is how I, that's how I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know.
So because nothing was tracked previously, at one of the, at one of these meetings, I said, Taylor, can you reach out to everybody with an open committee? Go as far back as 2015, 2016. Let's just get them closed. That did not mean let's haul them in and assess fines. It meant let's just get them closed. That way we don't have to go and, and close them all because for us to do it, it's a ton of work. For them to do it, it's a form. Um, and have you, you've already read through everything from Mr. Holfield?
I will note, this is not, he is not one of the people that I reached out to. This was done prior to us doing that.
Well, my guess is maybe he watched the meeting.
I just, I remember, I think, I remember when I decided to file, that I think I wanted to make sure the paperwork was done correctly before. I applaud you guys for following the rules now, finally. I love when the Port County actually does follow the rules no longer. It's, it doesn't happen very often. So I just wanna make sure there, and I'm under the impression I'm not here because of that. I'm here because of the snowstorm incident. I turned in a piece of paper an hour late.
Does Mr. Holfield have an open committee right now?
Well, yes, because he's-
I got-
I'm running for that.
Right now. Yeah, so he was trying to make sure before he filed that anything was closed.
An old one.
Correct.
I would make a motion-
It was his annual, but he did, he closed it showing that he didn't have anything.
I would make a motion to-
I have a question before we do that, please. So the Committee to Elect Steve Holfield, the CFA 4 that was in the name of Committee to Elect Steve Holfield that was filed, the date is on it is 1/14/24, but the file stamp is 1/17/2004.
Correct.
What's, what is your current active committee name?
Committee to Elect Steve Holfield.
That's confusing. So is that for the current-
The current one I'm doing right now, correct. The reason I did that, and I was told this in the past, not to change that because I have the statements on the bottom of my signs, so I'm reusing some of my old signs while I'm waiting for new signs.
Okay.
And again, that's just advice I was given back, all the way back to 2012 when I first started running.
And that is legal, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So you might need to-
They're expensive.
The disbanding has been done, but he's still using the name.
Yeah, yes, so he has a new, he's opened a new committee.
As of when?
When did I?
I've got it.
Because the one day I had to go, I had to, well, I had, I went to the clerk's office to turn paperwork in. I was going to fight, I had to go all the way across to Hyler Building to get it notarized, because there's no notaries left in the courthouse anymore, since they removed the voterization.
Your permission of the choir.
So then I had to go there and come back, and I believe that's where the one hour and five minutes, I believe, was late.
2/13/2024. He opened a committee when he filed.
Okay.
Or after he filed.
So everybody else that filed on the 17th got assessed 50 bucks.
If I owe the fine, I owe the fine.
I will make a motion to assess a $50 penalty. Yeah, yeah, that's it.
And I would second that.
And thank you for closing that committee.
I was always given, I'm glad you guys are fine, follow the rules. I understand that most. But I will also say on record that I agree with some of the other ones. You folks may feel the paperwork is very simple and not confusing.
It is.
It's very confusing to a lot of people, and I think it deters from getting good candidates to call, to step forward to take the action, so.
And the state, state election board is responsible for-
I know that. I understand that.
Okay, good.
When I go downstate again, I'll be talking to them. Thank you very much.
Before we close this out, if I haven't already said it on the record, the CFA 4 that was filed on 1/17/24 is Exhibit 4 in this hearing. Okay. Thank you. Did I call for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Brody's sitting here.
I'm here a minute.
Hello.
Hi, ma'am.
Are you Marcus?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good to see you. So we have some exhibits to enter before we begin talking with you. Exhibit 1 is the notice of hearing, which is dated March 11th. Exhibit 2 is the reminder notice dated December 14th, 2023. Exhibit 2. And the late filing notice, which is dated February 15th, 2024, is Exhibit 3. And there was a CFA 4 filed on February 21st, 24. That will be Exhibit 4. And how many days, Taylor?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Mr. Walker, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
This is your opportunity to defend.
So I'm gonna just be, I'm gonna do, I have honestly no, like, I'm not gonna sit here and bull crap you guys. I legit, I mean, I started a new job, and I'm the sole provider of my brother that's disabled, so I have to take care of my brother. So I honestly, I started my new job, and then I, my brother got real sick, so then I had to take, then I honestly forgot. And then I coached basketball, as Miss Stevens knows, and I'm a first responder firefighter for the South County. So I honestly, the reason I did this was to help the community and my fire, and the fire service. Miss Heather and Stevens know that I'm very big in my community, as Taylor knows too. I do, I do, I do try to help as best as I can, but honestly, I did forget, because I had a lot on mine with my brother, and then being a sole provider, because I used, I used to travel, I had to quit traveling for my brother so I can be more, be around more for him. So honestly, I wouldn't lie to you about that, but yes, that's what, I honestly did forget about that. I apologize.
And I know that you, you came in originally and you filed your annual report, and then a few weeks later, you decided, you know what, let's just go ahead and disband that, so probably, probably a good move.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
So the committee's disbanded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have any signs or nothing. I didn't, I didn't do any of that, honestly.
Okay.
I didn't.
What is the thoughts of the committee?
I would make a motion to reduce the $1,000 assessed penalty to $200.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So you guys will send me something in the mail then?
Wait.
Taylor, you have my correct address?
The-
904?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one more. Mr. Leo Spence. Let me do the paperwork first.
Hello.
Hi. Hi. So we have a notice of hearing dated March 11th, Exhibit 1. Have a reminder notice dated December 14th, 2023, which will be Exhibit 2. And we have a late filing notice dated February 15th, 2024, Exhibit 3. And we have a CFA 4, which was prepared and filed on March 28th, 2024. That will be Exhibit 4. Mr. Spence, would you raise your right hand? Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
This is your opportunity to defend.
All right, uh, first time running, never free, any kind of office, so didn't really know what I was doing. And, uh, one thing where I live at, moving down Fish Lake, 117 Fern, and there's a 117 Fur. A lot of my mail goes to her house, just like her mail goes to my house. I don't know if this gets out, like, maybe you guys send out certified mail? I have no idea, because I never got anything in the mail, to be honest with you. And I talked to the post office about the situation, but they do get substitute drivers a lot. I never received anything until I got an email. And then, of course, January 17th deadline, I work for the county highway, and I am a hot truck. I am out all night, all day. I had to stay in for EMS T, or EMS stay for two nights in a row. I, I just, I have five kids. No fault, my fault. Didn't know what I was doing, so. Mistake, so I'm learning. Hopefully some people behind me will help me out eventually down the road, you know, board members. I'm with Steve on Lake of Township Board, so. That was my fault. So I just, like I said, 117 Fern. Once, it's a big mix-up. You can call her up, because like, I go down to her house, drop her mail off, or she'll come to my house, drop mail off, or sometimes just, it is what it is, so I apologize. So I'm learning where I'm going.
Are there any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Make a motion to reduce, wait, I would make a motion to assess a reduced penalty from $1,000 to $200.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies. Have a good weekend.
You too.
Taylor, how many days on that last one? I didn't make a note. Seventy-one, thank you. Ma'am, we can clear a room.
Brody sent me the hair. There you are, my dear.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Good to see you again, my dear.
Would you like to make a board member comment?
Yeah.
If you're seated here. Oh, that's next on the agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for stepping in when needed.
That, that is quite all right. I'm glad I got help. Very interesting, very interesting. Heather?
I have a lot to say. Early voting started this week. It's, it's always a slow start. It's to be expected. It's just gonna keep getting, you know, busier and busier. We've had, with, with some changes, we've had to do some things with signage. We're actually still waiting on some. I wanted the little dancing guys that will draw attention. Those are very expensive. No luck yet with county, or with the state highway to get a sign out on, out on 112 there, but we do have more signage out at all of the locations, really, so that they're a little more, they're a lot more noticeable than what they were on Tuesday. What else did I wanna touch on? These fines and penalties, this was, this was not fun. These were, it was, it was not, I mean, these are people that I've, you know, I'm friends with some of, some of the people that were, that were up here in front of us. I work alongside of them. But I, I think that, I think that when we jumped the gun and we, we assessed $1,000 penalties, I think we woke everybody up. Even ourselves a little. So I, I think that by, by dialing back and by trying very hard to assess fair penalties across the board, I'm hopeful that, that the two-party chairs are gonna, are gonna pay attention, because not only can you just, you know, push, push everybody out there, but you've gotta help them along the way. And I do understand that there, there's a lot that candidates don't know. I, I mean, there's a lot that, there's a lot that this board doesn't know. We're constantly learning. So, but if it's gonna be, you know, if, if the rules are transparency and accountability, and that's what we're gonna push, so. Early voting, like I said, go, going pretty well. It's, it is a primary, so it will be slower, but the Wednesday hours, again, every, every other day is Monday and Tuesday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Wednesday noon until 8:00 PM. Thursday and Friday, 8:00 to 4:00, and the last two Saturdays before the election, 8:00 to 3:00. So please get out there and vote. We're spending a lot of money on this, so I wanna see people taken advantage.
So Heather, could you clarify that the Saturday voting locations are the same as the four currently open?
Yes, yeah.
All on the, on the county website?
Everything's on.
Election.
Yep, go to the county website or call the office, 219-325-5573. I believe Taylor made sure this morning that, that every deputy clerk has, has a, a list in their hand of the hours and the dates and the times and the locations.
Very good.
So we've, we've, we've got the mobile schedule, we can, you know, we'll, we'll get everybody voted. That's the goal.
That's the goal.
All right.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I appreciate such hard work, Taylor, on your part in going through this process of monitoring the, the filings and following up with people and making all these copies. And Brody, I think, did a fabulous job with, with preparing the the chart that we need to, to run through this very smoothly and, and just handling the hearing process, and thank you to Regina for stepping in as needed. And vote, vote, vote. Uh, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
You want it on the record?
You're just, I would if you got done. With all the discrepancies going on with the accounts in the Port County right now, where does these, this fines, where's this money go to?
That is such a great question.
It's a good question.
That's a great question. This money actually goes into, this will stay with the county election board.
So you guys are controlling it then?
Yes, it is, it is not revert, this does not revert back to the general fund. This stays with the board. And then it can be used for things that are needed for election purposes.
Like signs at the polling?
Signs at the polling locations. Uh, you know, someday we will have to replace all of those.
Oh, yeah, they wear out.
They will wear out. So, you know, I'd like to see that go toward things, things like that, so.
I was curious. All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
We're outta here.
Okay.